Okay, good morning and welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, December 17th. I am your Chair Sean Flowerday, with me is Vice Chair Rick Vest and Commissioners Matt Schulte, Roma Amundson and Krista Yocum. Please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, please begin.
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located at the wall of the rear of the hearing room. All written materials to be discussed at today's meeting can be viewed at the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Printing options are available upon request. Brings us to item one, minutes. Approval of the Board, minutes of the Board Commissioners meeting held in December 10th, 2024.
Move approval? Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item two, claims, two A. Approval of the claims processed through December 13th, 2024, and I'll note there is an amendment for payroll.
I would move approval of item two A with the amendment to include payroll disbursements through December 11th, 2024.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Two B is approval of a claim to the mediation center in the amount of $8,450.
I move approval of this claim.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Abstain.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item three, consent items. These are routine business items that are expected to be adopted without dissent. Any individual item may be removed for special discussion and consideration by Commissioner by a member of the public without prior notice. Unless there is an exception, these items will be approved as one single vote of the Board of Commissioners. These items are the approval of A, amendments to the following county contracts, C-22-0009 with Rixtean recognition to provide plaques, trophies, and promotional items, C-23-0896 with the Regional Behavioral Health Authority on behalf of Region Five Systems to support stepping up initiative activities, C-24-0199 with Gana Trucking to provide road maintenance while conducting excavation of soil, sand, and gravel on property located east of 7,600 North 70th Street, C-23-0948 with Interconnects LLC for physical access control system equipment and services, B, right-of-way contracts with the following: Deborah L. and Kurt B. Oates, Southwest 128th Street and Panama Road in the amount of $617.50, Ty and Lindsay Peterson, West Panama Road and Southwest 14th Street in the amount of $352, Hope and Tierney and Karma, Kramer, Southwest 128th Street and West Panama Road in the amount of $280, Priscilla Henkelman, Rebecca Wells and Gregory Heckelman, South 46th Street and Brandon Boulevard in the total amount of $55,065, Cartwell Ranch Two LLC doing business as La Barren Farms LLC, Southwest 4th Street and 14th Street and West Roca Road in the amount of $285, Lancaster County Rural Water District One, South 176th Street and Pella Road in the amount of $955, Kelvin and Arduth Coover, South 176th Street and Pella Road in the amount of $842, Karen L. Top, South 176th Street and Pella Road in the amount of $842.50, C, grant contracts with the following: Cedars Youth Services Incorporated for the Childcare Assistance Program in the amount of $76,000, Community Action Partnership of Lancaster and Saunders Counties for the Childcare Assistance Program in the amount of $65,000, EduCare of Lincoln Incorporated for the Childcare Assistance Program in the amount of $100,000, D, a grant contract with The Hub Central Access Point for Young Adults for the Back on Track Program in the amount of $28,274, E, grant contracts with the City of Lincoln Police Department for the following: Operation Tipping Point Program in the amount of $111,230, and two, the Coordinated Response to Reducing Domestic Violence Program in the amount of $45,816.
Move approval of the consent items?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item four is our public hearing. It is a hearing on the amendments to the following: Article Two, Sections 1, 8, 11, and 22, excuse me, 11 and 22 of the Lincoln Lancaster County Air Pollution Control Program Regulations and Standards.
Morning Commissioners, Gary Bergstrom, Air Quality Section Supervisor with the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department.
Real quick, we'll have to open the hearing and swear again.
Oh, sorry.
We will now go ahead and open the public hearing on the Lincoln Lancaster County Air Pollution Control Program Regulations and Standards.
Sorry for jumping again.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Go ahead and start.
So as we discussed at the staff meeting a little while back, these changes really are to comply with federal court rulings and federal regulations that have been passed down, essentially holding that the provisions that we're removing from the Lincoln Lancaster County Air Pollution Control Regulations and Standards are really not in keeping with the original intent of the Clean Air Act, and so again, it's really to comply with those findings and those rulings. And then there was one, as I mentioned, one clarification or a reference correction in one of the sections. So happy to answer any questions you might have on those.
Any discussion?
I appreciated the briefing before and appreciate you being on top of this so that we're comfortable.
Yeah. Thank you. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on the County Air Pollution Control Program Regulations and Standards? No members of the public wishing to speak? Okay, we'll go ahead and close that public hearing.
It brings us to item five, new business, five A, a resolution in the matter of amending Article Two of the Lincoln Lancaster County Air Pollution Control Program Regulations and Standards as provided in Attachment A.
Move approval.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Five B, reappointments to the Air Pollution Control Advisory Board for terms to expire in September 1st, 2027 for Jocelyn Ludke and Peush Strasdav.
I move approval of these. Oh, go ahead.
I was just, yeah, me again. I just, I'm gonna just mention the fact that, you know, we're happy to have them nominated for reappointment to the board. Peush and Jocelyn both have been very valuable members of the board, and we just, they continue to serve in their capacities. We're really excited again, having them nominated and, you know.
Does this board, the folks who serve on it come from a variety of different backgrounds? Do you know briefly what the background of these two individuals are?
Oh, yes. So Jocelyn has, I believe she works with a law firm here in town, I forget the name, but she's with a law firm here in town. She's served as a legislative aide, writing legislation and things like that, and so she's very familiar with regulations, very familiar with law. She actually, at one point, was an intern with our health department, and so she's, you know, proven herself very knowledgeable, and especially with reg changes like we're bringing today, very knowledgeable on those and can speak with authority when she's examining that, so really appreciate her. Peush is an environmental consultant, basically owns Nebraska Air Quality Specialties, Eric Nax. He has previously, you know, worked for, I believe, the NDEE, NPPD, again, you know, have a, I've actually, I've been with the health department for 20 years now, and I actually remember working with Peush when I very first started there. So he's got, and he'd been in the field for a while, so he's got a real wealth of knowledge on air quality and a really useful resource for our board. Just to speak a little bit more broadly about the board, again, the board is composed of nine voting members, five public members, four industry representatives. Peush and Jocelyn both represent public interests, so.
Yeah. Jocelyn was a, was a member of the bill drafting office at the legislature before her work at the lobby firm, so.
Yeah, I know we have a real broad group of individuals, so that we're making sure we address concerns from a variety of considerations, so I appreciate that.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I think they're both great. Hearing nothing else, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Five C is an appointment of Eric Barth to the Air Pollution Control Advisory Board for a term to expire on September 1st, 2027.
All right, Gary Bergstrom again, and we'll introduce Eric Barth. He currently works for Monolith and has previously worked for, again, Nebraska Environmental Energy, BNSF and their environmental program, Tyson Smart Chicken, as well as Stint in there. So he's been working in the environment for quite a while now, and he would represent industry on our board, and again, we're, good, long working relationship with Eric, you know, having worked with him when he was at BNSF especially, and then now with Monolith, and so happy that he's willing to serve on the board and.
We obviously have a lot of experience, so that's great. We appreciate this.
Yeah, you're welcome.
That would move approval.
Second?
We have a motion and a second.
Very good. Thanks for serving. It's very important to have quality people on these boards because you're dealing with issues that require some level of commitment and expertise, so anything you'd like to share this morning with the board?
No. Like Gary said, I've got, I think I'm going on 13-plus years now of environmental compliance experience. I actually started with DEQ at the time, NDEE now, as an inspector, so I've got a couple of years of experience on the inspection side, drafting permits, and then moved into private industry, started with Smart Chicken, moved to the railroad, and now Monolith. As my career has progressed, it seems like Gary and I talk more and more because the air permits have gotten more complicated as, as I've gone along, so I think I can help be a bridge between industry and environmental regulation, so really looking forward to the opportunity.
Well, you're more than qualified. Thanks for agreeing, sir.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none, please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Five D is proclaiming December 17th, 2024 as Roma Amundson Day.
Would you please go ahead and read the proclamation, Mr. Clerk?
Be honored to. Proclamation: Before the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Lancaster, Nebraska, in the matter of proclaiming December 17th, 2024 as Roma Amundson Day in the County of Lancaster, Nebraska, whereas Commissioner Roma Amundson was elected to Lancaster County for District Four in November 2012, whereas Commissioner Amundson honorably and diligently served her constituents and the broader Lancaster County community for 12 years throughout three consecutive terms of office, and whereas Commissioner Amundson brought the County Board a wealth of leadership, experience from her 33-year military career in the Nebraska National Guard, where she retired as a Brigadier General, exemplifying dedication, excellence, and steadfast commitment to service, and whereas Commissioner Amundson's tenure is marked by her persistent advocacy for public safety, juvenile justice, infrastructure improvements, community collaboration, and fiscal stewardship, ensuring that Lancaster County remains a healthy, safe, diverse, and vibrant place to live, and whereas Commissioner Amundson championed notable accomplishments, including spearheading the 2023-2025 Lancaster County Strategic Plan, launching the Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative in Lancaster County, remaking the county-city downtown campus with remodeling and renovation of the 605 building, and shepherding the relocation of the Veterans Service Office to Victory Park, and whereas Commissioner Amundson served as the longest-tenured Chair of the county, excuse me, longest-tenured Chair of the City-City Common Meeting from 2021 to 2024, and as Chair of the Public Building Commission from 2017 to 2024, skillfully guiding and collaborating between Lancaster County and the City of Lincoln, where she advanced mutual priorities and strengthened the intergovernmental partnerships, and whereas Commissioner Amundson's distinguished record of service extends beyond the County Board to her roles as a beekeeper, realtor, and mentor in our community, exemplifying a life dedicated to public service and personal and professional growth, and whereas Commissioner Amundson's faithful leadership and dependable presence on the County Board will be missed, yet we wish her all the best as she enjoys more time with family and friends and tending to her bees, gardening, and traveling. Now therefore, we, the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Lancaster, Nebraska, do hereby proclaim December 17th, 2024 as Roma Amundson Day in Lancaster County, Nebraska, in honor of her unwavering dedication and thoughtful leadership and profound contributions to public service. In witness thereof, we have here and to sign December 17th, 2024 by the Board of County Commissioners in the County of Lancaster, Nebraska.
And I know everybody wants an opportunity to be able to embarrass you here, but I think before we move on, I think there's something else that we've got prepared as well that they're pulling up now.
I first met Roma back in 2012, and we had the opportunity to serve together for 10 years. She really brings a very diverse background to the board.
Roma brings that great cross between being in the military and also being a teacher. So she is a very strong leader, but a compassionate one.
As a soldier, I learned a lot from people who were above me, and I learned a lot from her because, you know, she was a Brigadier General in the National Guard.
Some of the things I learned from her, well, first of all, her dedication to leadership and the opportunity to serve, whether it's in public office or in the military, also her persistence.
She knew how to accomplish things, and she did that well. And she was always involved in planning and looking forward and making, making the county better.
She's a wonderful listener, and she has a knack of listening to all the voices, not just the loudest ones.
Roma was always kind and always wanted to include people in making decisions and reaching goals, and so as a result, I was always happy to, to visit with her and make suggestions as to what we can do at the Veterans Court or what we could do with the County Veterans Service Office.
And I'm sure other people have mentioned her passion for veterans and the military, and her push to move our, the Lancaster County Veterans Office from the downtown campus out to Victory Park to make it more accessible for our vets.
You know, when we had our graduations for Veterans Court, she would always attend, and she would always join in and be a part of it. One of the things I remember most were her salutes to the veterans and how, how she carried on that tradition that she had been doing for 30-some years, I think.
I remember distinctly, I was new on the job and still trying to get my, my feet on the ground and trying to decide what are my decisions alone to make one more, and I remember distinctly asking her about something, and her comment back to me was, "Well, why don't you come up with the best solution and let me know what that is?" And turned around and left. I thought, "Perfect, that is exactly the direction that I needed." She empowered me to do my own job.
If I were to describe Roma's leadership style, I think it'd be transformative. She was one that, after I had a big presentation or something that maybe she knew I was a little bit nervous about, I'd get a card from her saying how great everything was.
One of the things that I particularly enjoy about Roma is her energy level. You could always tell when Roma was in the office first thing in the morning because you could hear her whistling.
Roma is a force. Her work ethic and her energy level is just right up here all the time.
One of the other things about Roma is her love of beekeeping. We always knew when the queen was coming, and just something else that, her diverse background and her love of so many things.
I think Roma is leaving a legacy of someone who really cares about what happens to residents in Lancaster County.
She is very passionate about Lancaster County. She's passionate about our constituent. She's equally passionate about those of us that work for the county.
I'm going to miss her guidance and direction because she never went astray from what we needed in this county.
I'm going to, Roma, I'm gonna miss you. I'm gonna miss you terribly. You were instrumental in making me feel comfortable and empowered.
I will miss working with Roma. She, she was great. She was a great person, somebody that I will always look up to.
I want to wish Roma the best in her retirement, and she's retired many times from different careers, but I know that she will enjoy it, more road trips, more time with the grandkids, more time with the bees, more time in the garden, and all of that. So congratulations to Roma. Your retirement is well deserved.
Yeah, of course. No, we're gonna, we're gonna make a whole thing out of it, please.
Oh, that was really nice. Thank you.
We're glad you liked it.
Yes.
Well, you know, the next thing would be if all this good stuff, if somebody actually moved to approve this.
Yeah, we, no, no, we still need the motion, but, but I think Roma has a farewell speech.
Yes, I do have a farewell speech, and I would, it's a few pages.
Of course it is. No, no one doubted. No one had any doubt.
As it should be.
Well, thank you so much for that presentation. That was really, really super. I just really enjoyed that. Gosh, I don't know where you got all those pictures. Anyway, all the world's a stage, and all the men and women merely players. They have their exits and their entrances, and each person in his time plays many parts. So 12 years ago, I made my entrance onto the stage of the Board of County Commissioners, and at that time, and in that time, I have had many great experiences and I have met amazing people. 12 years have really flown by, and it's now my time to exit that stage. I consider it a privilege and an honor to have been elected for three terms to serve the constituents of Lancaster County, and I thank the voters of District Four for their confidence and their trust in me. That is a very meaningful part of my service as a county commissioner, and I'm very grateful to those voters. Additionally, I consider it a privilege and an honor to have served with so many people engaged in county government. During the 12 years, we've had changes among the board members every two to four years approximately, and I really feel privileged to have collaborated with so many talented, intelligent, and thoughtful people who have served on the board. Being a county commissioner is really an exercise in talking through issues, trying to find solutions to various concerns and situations, formulating legislative initiatives, doing research, and meeting with constituents. Through all of my conversations with colleagues, past and present, my primary interest was how the needs of the citizens could be best served regardless of political concerns. So thank you to all of you, Sean, Krista, Rick, and Matt, as well as all the prior commissioners with whom I have worked. We've cooperated and collaborated together to make Lancaster County a superb place to live, to work, and to raise a family. I've also been privileged to work with many department heads, both elected and appointed. All of the department's heads have impressed me with how they strive to meet the directives of the County Board, manage the budgets, point out problems that should be resolved, and bring forward ideas to improve department services to constituents. In the interactions I've had with department heads, both past and present, I have observed their dedication to their job, diligence in the performance of duty, and compassion for the people. So thank you to all of the department heads who are making Lancaster County a superb place to live, to work, and to raise a family. place to live, to work, and to raise a family. Next, I have been privileged to see how all 877 employees of Lancaster work. You are the ones who do the business of Lancaster County. When I've walked through the office to talk to department heads or just simply to walk through the offices to say hi, I see all of the employees working at desk, assisting people, completing paperwork, et cetera. And I see engineers out on the roads, corrections and law enforcement people doing their jobs, and maintenance people taking care of our facilities. You know, I could go on and on and on, but time is limited. We have other businesses to do too. But the business of Lancaster County would not be conducted without you, our trained and thoughtful employees who contribute to making Lancaster County a superb place to work, to live, and to raise a family. Finally, I have been privileged to meet with and collaborate with many, many, many community leaders. There are countless community organizations which share common interests with county government and serve the people of Lancaster County. The relationships between these community organizations and the county really do intersect in so many ways to serve the needs of people living in Lancaster County. So thank you to all of the community people involved in organizations who contribute to the county. You have made Lancaster County a superb place to live, to work, and to raise a family. These are the people with whom I have had the experience of sharing county government work. Honestly, I can say that what I will miss the most about leaving county government is the people. I respect and admire the people involved in Lancaster County government, and I am proud to have served with all of them. I've been asked a few thoughts about my, I've been asked a few questions about my thoughts of retirement. Well, I'm excited about it. I think it's going to be great. I view it as a rejuvenation almost, of being able to engage in new ventures. I think retirement is actually a repurposing of oneself, and that is exactly what I intend to do. Randy and I will still be involved in real estate, and by the way, my husband Randy, he's been with me throughout, I really need to mention this, 13 years ago, I asked him, I said, "Well, Randy, what do you think if I ran for county government?" And he said, "That's fine, let's do it." We're always a pair. And so then 13 years ago, at the same time, I said, "Randy, what would you think if we raised bees?" And he said, "Does that mean I don't have to put up a fence to keep a horse in?" And I said, "Yeah." He thought that was a great idea, but you didn't realize what you were getting into. So anyway, honey, thank you for all of your support. So, but we do plan to travel, and we have a trip planned right now to Iceland and to Norway, and we'll take shorter trips here in the United States. There are several national and historic, and national historic parks we want to experience. We have grandkids that we absolutely need to visit to ensure that their parents are taking adequate care of them. And we will continue to work on our acreage, gardening, beekeeping, woodworking, and all the work that goes into keeping up an acreage. So just as there was the first day that I stepped onto the stage of the County Board and made my entrance, there's always a last day. And so today, I take my exit off this stage of the Board of County Commissioners. It has truly been an honor and a privilege to have served Lancaster County and to have worked with all of the wonderful people who make up county government. Thank you.
Thank you, Roma. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
It has been such an honor and such a privilege to be your partner on this board over the last six years. It's, it really is, without exaggeration, without hyperbole, this community is better in a thousand ways, and that's a literal number. I'm sure it's that or more, and a thousand ways because you were here doing this job for the last 12 years. You've absolutely contributed to the success of this community in many, 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 many huge ways, and I just want to thank you for your service, really.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
When I won election the first time in November 2018, one of the first things that happened was I got contacted by Commissioner Amundson, who wanted to welcome me to the Board and help me get off to a positive start in my experience. And she's consistently done that during the entire time that we've served together and been a faithful mentor and friend through all kinds of different situations, even when we found ourselves disagreeing, which actually wasn't very often. So many times, Roma and I had to help educate the rest of the Board to catch up, but that's a bad joke. But anyway, it's just been an honor, Roma, and you know that, and we will miss you tremendously, and we will miss Randy, and you've just been a consistent positive force in this.
I think of your service, I absolutely think of your longevity. 12, 13 years is a great time of leadership and stepping up. You wonder how many thousands of votes you've cast in that time, so.
I never counted them.
Should tell you that, absolutely.
Actually, the 13th year was actually the year when Randy and I went out walking precincts. Randy walked precincts with me, and anyway, I have to tell a story, can I?
There aren't rules there.
I guess it's my time.
Yeah, yeah. You're going to let us stop you? You know what?
April 7th in 2012 was before the primary election, and kids came home, and they said, "Mom, how can we celebrate, how can we, what can we do for you?" And I said, "You guys can walk a precinct." And they said, "Are you kidding?" Well, anyway, we broke precinct in half. Dawn had one half, and Justin had the other half. And he came back telling this story now that, well, he's six foot six, remember that?
Yeah.
Okay, he's six foot six, and at that time, he weighed about 220, so he was a big guy. And anyway, he knocked on the door, and door opened, there was a little boy there, and he looked up, and he turned, he did an about face, as perfect as what a military person could do, and said, "Mommy, mommy, there's a big man here." So anyway.
Roma, I have learned so much from working with you, and we've been sharing this for a couple of weeks every time we see each other, about how much we've appreciated working together. And while there were, there isn't everything in the world that we agree on, we agreed on so much, and being able to talk it out has been so helpful. Your leadership, you know, others have expressed it, but I certainly realize that and recognize that as well. And I, you know, just as we were sitting here, I was thinking back to when I first asked you to speak at a citizenship ceremony.
Oh, yeah.
Do you remember that?
Yes, I do.
I don't know, six years ago, eight years ago? I don't remember how long ago that was. But that was the first time that we actually had any kind of partnership in that way. I worry about us as a board as you leave because you take so much institutional knowledge. Not that everyone here isn't great to serve with, but certainly you know so much about county government and where we've been and how we got to where we are, that is hugely, hugely helpful. And with that, I would like to move forward to proclaim December 17th, 2024, as Roma Amundson Day.
I would second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Thank you for your service, Roma.
You bet. It was a privilege.
Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries.
It is Roma Amundson Day.
Very good.
Commissioners, that brings us to 5E, Resolution on the Matter of the Annual Salary Increases for Appointed Directors, Assistant Directors, Bailiffs, and the Child Support Referee.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries. 5F, A Data Sharing Agreement with the Board for Regents of the University of Nebraska on behalf of the University of Nebraska at Omaha to allow the exchange of confidential and proprietary information from the County Attorney's Office for the purpose of conducting assessments of the county criminal justice system and the county jail pursuant to county contract, C-24-0093.
I'll move approval.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries. 5G, Agreement with HOVA for Mobile Platform and Event Services for the Nebraska 2025 Nebraska Community Aid and Juvenile Justice Conference. Cost is not to exceed $2,999.
Good morning, Sarah Hoyle, Director of Human Services for the City of Lincoln and Lancaster County. This is for a contract with an online platform to run our conference this summer. The conference is planned for June. It's looking like it'll be at the graduate. Hopefully, everyone's able to attend, but this just allows, now everything's automated through your phone when you attend a conference, so it allows you to pull up the agenda and select kind of what workshops you want to attend.
As a user, I certainly appreciate that type of a platform. When attending a conference, I would move approval.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries. 5H, The Acceptance of a Justice Assistance Grant Task Force Award in the Amount of $100,000 for the Lancaster County Sheriff's Office Narcotics Task Force Project.
Hi, Sarah, some Lancaster County Sheriff's Office, I'm the Business Manager there. A couple of weeks ago, I was before you asking for permission to do this. I'm happy to say that we got $100,000. So we are able to get our trailer and funding for our deputy for six months. So then hopefully in six months, this will open back up, and we'll do this all over again, minus the trailer.
Nice work.
Thank you.
Really good, nice work.
Yeah, thank you.
I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries. 5I, A Grant Award from the Nebraska Crime Commission for the Community-Based Supplemental Enhancement Aid Grant Funding in the Amount of $123,847.
Okay, Sarah, with Human Services again, this particular grant funds a couple of different things. It funds the Community Aid Conference that we just spoke about for the HOVA app. It also funds a portion of a program called Rebalance for Youth for Christ. It funds Boys and Girls Club, one of their STEM programs that they offer, and then also Back on Track, which is a truancy implementation plan, I guess, program through the hub.
I'd move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries. 5J, Grant Contract with Youth for Christ for the Rebalance Program in the Amount of $5,781.
And this particular program is a new program for us to refer to for kids on diversion to help with regulating some of their emotions that a lot of our kids experience when they come through our office. So teaching them when they get angry, how to kind of talk to themselves, calm down before they end up back in our office again.
We may need to spread this program beyond kids. I would move approval.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I'll just say, I work at Youth for Christ, so I will abstain from voting on this.
Sure. Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Abstain.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries. 5K, A Contract with Lobato Construction LLC to Provide for the Placement of County Bridge S-59. Cost of the county is not to exceed $717,925.65.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. This is for a bridge located, excuse me, as noted by the red dot on the map that I've placed on the overhead. Do we need just a second? And now, just, this bridge is located just north of the village of Roca. This is getting to be not quite our last, but our last handful of the WPA spread footing bridges. This bridge is particularly not awesome. It is also rated poor, so it's on our target list, and we are excited to get this bridge off of our inventory. We did get eight bids, they were under the engineer's estimate, and so we're super excited about that. And this is our last structure that we'll be replacing in our budget year, and so we're excited to get all of these out and under contract before the end of the year.
Congratulations on that.
At a gut check, how many WPA era bridges do you think we still have? I'm not expecting a hard count.
You know, I'm totally gut-checking, probably five? But you know, that we've replaced, probably 25. So you know, the number is significant.
An amazing statement from where we were at, just, you know, six years ago. So it really, like, good work. You and your staff should be very, very proud. That's an amazing accomplishment.
Thank you. And we are, of course, because it's been so warm out, still constructing things. Yesterday was concrete pour and bridge beam placement, so we're looking forward at the possibility of maybe opening up a few more.
What's the number on that bridge that you, that concrete was poured?
Q110.
I just was waiting for that.
You'll be invited to the opening. The contractor is actually ahead of schedule, so you'll be invited to the opening. We're not going to, I don't think we'll make it during your tenure, unfortunately, Commissioner Amundson, but that was my humble goal.
The main thing is, the bridge will be opening soon.
The bridge will be opening.
That's the main thing.
You were correct.
I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to 5L, A Recommendation from the Purchasing Agent on behalf of the County Engineer to Award a Soul Source Contract to Ayers &amp; Ayers Roof Repair of the Roca Building Roof. Total amount of the contract is $99,306.
Yeah, good morning, Commissioners. Ryan Shaw, Lancaster County Engineering Facilities and Fleet Manager. This is for the roof of our Roca shop. It was built in approximately 1968-69 era. It was a Butler-built building. Ayers &amp; Ayers is the Butler contractor for the eastern side of Nebraska, so we've got a sole source bid for those, for them to replace this roof along with the insulation in that building. It's obviously in need of repair. It's the original roof to the building from 69, 68 era, so.
I'd move approval.
Sounds like we got our money's worth out of the first bridge, or for the roof, so I would say.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I know that this, this particular building, this helps, this doesn't solve all the problems down there at the Roca facility, but I'm glad we're taking a step to fix it up.
Yeah, at least keeping the structure sound.
Yeah.
Keeping some of the leaks down inside the building.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries. 5M, An Interlocal Agreement with the City of Waverly to Support Waverly's Water Supply and Distribution Improvement Project through a Grant of $478,516.31. American Rescue Plan Act Funds from the County.
Hello, Stephanie Fisher. I'm the City Administrator for the City of Waverly. It's wonderful to be here in front of you all again. I just wanted to share a little bit of an update on our test well project and the overall water system improvements that we're doing in the City of Waverly. So just to share with you, the City of Waverly has eight wells for our community. Two of those wells are in town. They're the oldest wells that we have, and they're in what is called an alluvial aquifer, so it's a much shallower aquifer. Our other six wells are south of town in what we would call our well field area. Our other six wells are south of town in what we would call our well field area. And they are in a semi-confined aquifer, which is a little bit more of a slower transmission of rain events to that water system. So as we continue to grow as a community, we are looking to diversify and enlarge our water capacity for our community. So in that effort, we are going to do a test well project where we will go out and do test holes and then test wells and then try to find an applicable area for a new well and hopefully a well field for our community. We've contracted with JEO already to manage the test well project. And we're going to have our kickoff meeting in January to start that. So we are trying to hit the ground running and be able to get this project going as quickly as possible. JEO is going to review the data from various studies that we've already had done and then also work with other agencies that have information about water in the area, especially like the NRDs and the DNR. They're gonna determine the test hole locations and coordinate the bids from the well drillers. We have a goal of doing around thirteen test holes. And the test hole is just where they pull a soil core sample, and that determines the transmissivity of that soil in that area. So basically, how well water is going to percolate through that well, through that area. Then the city would determine where the test wells, an actual test well would be dug to be able to actually pump the well, determine what the drawdown is, what the chemical makeup is of the water in that area, making sure that we're, you know, finding the best quality of water, their quality and quantity of water. With our end goal being that we will dig a well and and so we would engineer the well, dig it, and also engineer and construct the pipelines, the water mains, back to the city's current and existing water system. So that sounds easy enough, but there's a lot of steps in that process. And obviously, we'll have to work with landowners for easements and purchasing land. So that was, that is what all of those, or what we will use those monies for. So thank you to Lancaster County and your continued partnership with the city of Waverly. Your decision to allocate a portion of your ARPA funds to our water system improvements ensures that our search for additional well sites is accomplished as quickly as possible. And it helps to offset the costs incurred by the city and allows us to continue routine maintenance on our existing system. We appreciate your commitment to communities in Lancaster County as a whole and especially for your part in making Waverly a great place to grow. Thank you.
So, so a couple of things here worth noting, and we could spend a lot of time talking about ARPA and our desire to grow Lancaster County. We've been very consistent about long-term developmental projects. We gave two and a half million dollars to Rural Water to help growth and development in that district. And here is another chance to help a community that's committed to growing and developing with the all-important sourcing of water. And I know, Sean, you've talked about when Waverly partnered with the city of Lincoln and Lancaster County.
Yeah, Waverly was instrumental in our initiative to get that legislature to allocate money broadly to the whole, you know, the whole broader Lincoln, Lincoln and southeast, you know, southeast Nebraska water projects here, so.
On very short notice, as I recall.
Overnight.
Miss Fisher.
Overnight, overnight.
On-time delivery. And that's the kind of professionalism that is operating within the community of Waverly. So it makes it an easy decision to support the growth that will result in new homes and more residences in our county. So I'm honored to move approval of this one.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
That's great. Thank you.
Five N. A memorandum of understanding with Axon Enterprise Incorporated for body worn cameras and related products and services. The estimated cost of the county is not to exceed one million forty-one thousand eight hundred and ninety-two dollars.
Good morning. Ben Houchen from Lancaster County Sheriff's Office. As you know, we have been, we're going to be moving from WatchGuard to Axon, and it is a five-year deal on that. We have received a grant, and it will be coming in October of twenty-five. Our biggest concern right now is we will be getting our six brand-new Cruisers come April. And we do not want to put in WatchGuard into those vehicles. And we'd like to move forward with Axon. And what I'm basically asking is for just two hundred and eight thousand dollars. And then once the grant comes, put that money back and pay the rest of Axon with that funding.
These cameras are an improvement, Ben. I mean, there's a reason for your shifting from one company to the other.
We've had difficulties with WatchGuard. They got bought out by Motorola, and we've had some major issues. Brand-new cameras coming out of the box, and we're having to send them back because they weren't working. The Lincoln Police Department has gone to them also. The recordings are better. They also have some with the records. And being able to store the video, as you know, it's not just purchasing the camera, it's the storage that costs a lot. And that will be taken care of. And I believe we'll subtract about fifty to fifty-five thousand dollars on servers because we won't be needing those anymore. So there's going to be some cost savings on that. But again, the main thing is we are looking to upgrade. And I just, the sooner I can get rid of WatchGuard and not have them in those Cruisers, the better off. Because we're going to have to have a dual for a while, because I'm not going to take every one of them out. And that's the reason why I'm asking to do it in April.
So one of the, one of the questions that has come up is kind of just timing of the earmark from the feds versus when we have to make our first payment and whether that will be reimbursable or not. And, and at this point in time, none of us can really answer that. I did have a conversation with Ben before the meeting today. And, and one of the options that, that we talked about was using some of the funding set aside in the countywide sinking fund for, we've got what I call weapons and stuff like that that we've got set aside so that so that we're able to move on with this memorandum, so that they can get the new ones in their vehicles. We can make payment out of that, and then we can just kind of ride out the federal session to see what actually, what actually happens there and the timing there.
How confident are we that we're going to get all the money?
Right.
We received an email on that, and it said that we were awarded it. I mean, could anything change? As you know, it could change. But at this point in time, I certainly have not heard anything that would make me believe that.
And what's the amount of that award?
One million ninety-five thousand dollars, I believe, off the top of my head.
Over a five-year period? Or no, you get it, I see.
Yeah, we'll get it all. And then once we get that, we'll just pay Axon all of it and then not have to pay the two hundred and eight every year. Just be taken care of for those, that time period.
I don't think we can ask Ben to guarantee actions carried out by the United States government. So I'm going to move approval of this. And I do appreciate the Lancaster County Sheriff's Department continuing to maintain high professional standards and their commitment to transparency in serving the public. So I move approval.
Second that.
I'll support this, but do you need us to tell you where to take the money from?
At this point in.
Sinking fund's the right place.
Yeah, and I think right now, payment won't be made until March. I told Ben and Sarah, I said, you know what, at this point in time, let's make it the sinking fund. And then we ride it out and see where we're at. But my plan would be, would be the sinking fund.
Do we need that included in the motion? That's my only question. We're okay?
Yeah, I think we're okay. I mean, I think I'm fine with that.
And I'll reach out to the names on the, for the grant, and I'll do some talking. And if anything changes, I'll certainly come back and inform you guys of it.
Sounds good. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries. Five O. A contract with Office Interiors and Design Incorporated to provide systems furniture for Square One Family Resource Center. Cost of the county is not to exceed a hundred and fifty-two thousand seven hundred ninety dollars and eleven cents.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Ametson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries. Five P. Contract with Genesis Contracting Group LLC to provide construction for the Square One Family Resource Center. Cost of the county is not to exceed one million five hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars.
I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
It's a big, big step forward.
Yep. Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries. Five Q. Agreement with Milliman Incorporated to provide, to perform a feasibility and suitability study for self-insurance for the county's motor vehicle fleet. Cost of the county is not to exceed seven thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries. Five R. Authorizing Hub Investment Advisors to access county's health retirement savings plan data through a Mission Square Secure Web-Based Portal.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries. Five S. A series of recommendations from the Personal Policy Board. One, request to create the following classifications. Office Support Specialist and Motor Vehicle Assistant Team Supervisor. Two, request to revise the classification of Real Estate Manager. Three, request to change the pay grade classification of Casual Worker. Four, request to delete the pay grade AO five. Five, request to create the Lancaster County Bilingual Pay Policy Bulletin. And six, request to create the Lancaster County Official Team Development Functions Policy Bulletin.
I think, I believe we've been briefed on all of these. I'm going to move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Ametson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes, and thank you to the HR Department for their ongoing efforts to upgrade Lancaster County operations.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries. Five T. Agreement with Dentons Davis Brown PC to provide legal services to Lancaster County.
I'll move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum? Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries. Five U. Agreement with Wood Akin LLP to provide legal services to Lancaster County.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries. Five V. Agreement with Baylor Ebnen PC to provide legal services to Lancaster County.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to item six, public comment. Members of the public wishing to speak in items related to county business not on the agenda may do so at this time. Each speaker is limited to one appearance of up to five minutes. That time may not be reserved, transferred, or otherwise assigned to other speakers. These time limits may be extended or reasonably discreet at the discretion of the chair.
Any members of the public wishing to speak?
Good morning. Thank you for your service to the, for the county board. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Wanted to comment, I was back in, I think it was September, we talked about the cameras that were installed at the city libraries to monitor the drop boxes. And I was, the way it was mentioned, it kind of misunderstood because it sounded like there was going to be no cost to the county. Well, actually, the county did pay for the cameras and I think the installation, according to Todd. But it's, the, no cost was the mounting it on city property. The city was not going to charge you for the cameras. So it's kind of like, you know, what, what really went on is this county did pay for the cameras. I don't know if you've watched any of those cameras, the footage off of those, watching those drop boxes. Because where they're mounted, a lot of them, you cannot actually see what the person's going to be putting into the box because they're mounted behind the boxes. So in the, in the front is where they put in the ballots into the box. So I'm not too sure what the purpose of it is, if it's not really to watch and see what the person's putting in the box? Or was the purpose actually just to watch that nobody stole the box? I heard there was some damage to postal system drop boxes around the city, too, where a lot of them were tampered with and had to be removed. So it seems like, you know, sometimes we get into these situations with the ballots and the voting. And there's so much that's going on behind the scenes, but yet we can't, you know, get to the point where we can see the cast vote record. We can't see what the actual votes, the images of the votes that were actually cast. That should be public information. It shouldn't be held in secret. It's almost like there's a, somebody's hiding something they don't want to show. We need to be honest and show that our elections are fair and honest. Some of the results we had in this last election just do not look normal. But that's things I think you need to take a look at and see, you know, where, where do we have problems? Do we, are we actually voting in the people that need to serve in the office based upon the votes that are cast by the people of the county? I think we have a lot of questions that are not answered. What we want is honesty, transparency, truth. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to speak? No other members of the public wishing to speak?
What else is going to come up? I'll play a video because I'm on the record.
Same time constraints on it, but.
Five minutes, right?
Yeah, that's fine.
Four minutes and two minutes.
Perfect.
I'll just keep moving a second, and I'll sign in there.
Yeah, we can see it okay on the monitor.
Good there?
Yep.
Volume check.
Thank all of you for being here. I join Mr. Loquendo. It is really an honor to be able to meet with the intelligence community all over the world, and we thank them for their work. My questions are regarding Iran and obtaining the nuclear weapon. I'd like to ask some questions about that. But before I do that, I'd like to ask a question of Director Brennan. When the White House conducted their armed drone strikes in North Africa, particularly in Eastern Libya prior to the attack on the mission in Benghazi on nine-one-one last year, did the White House notify the State Department of the armed drone strikes before they were made?
Armed drone strikes in Libya?
I'm unknowing of such, and I would defer to the White House to address your question.
Were there any armed drone strikes in Northern Africa that were made by the White House?
The White House doesn't have a drone capability, responsibility, whatever, so.
Did they have any directives toward having armed drone strikes in North Africa?
Again, I don't know what it is specifically referring to, but again, I would defer to the White House on whatever happened at that time.
Well, excuse me, the capability, the UAVs that were over, flying over Libya were military and were unarmed.
And so, were there any armed drone strikes that were made in North Africa prior to 9/11?
Hey, Libya?
I'm asking in North Africa, I'm asking the, I'm asking Director Brennan, were there any armed drone strikes that were made by the United States in North Africa prior to 9/11?
Well, we usually don't talk about any specific actions, but again, I don't know what you could be referencing.
I'm just wondering if the State Department was aware or if the military was aware or if the CIA was aware. And if we aren't going to talk about that, we aren't going to talk about that, but that's a question I'd like to know. Going back to Iran, what is our red line regarding the Iranian nuclear weapon development program? I've asked Director Brennan, what is our, what is our red line?
That clearly is a policy question. That's one of the things that the intelligence community is trying to make sure that policymakers are fully informed about developments inside of Iran and their nuclear-related pursuits.
But regarding the, the nuclear weapon program and our intelligence capability, again, we have a wonderful intelligence community, but we weren't aware of the bombing in 1993 at the World Trade Center Tower. We weren't aware before 9/11 occurred in 2001. We weren't aware of the Arab Spring developments, and we weren't aware of the attack on the mission in Benghazi. How do we have confidence that we will know when Iran has amassed the capability of developing a nuclear weapon? I ask that because the president said last month that it would take approximately a year for, to develop a nuclear weapon once they had made that decision. Last week, we know that the current negotiations have gone without any breakthrough or any development. And so, I'm very concerned about our intelligence capability of knowing with a high degree of certainty when Iran has either made the decision to develop nuclear weapons or has obtained nuclear weapons.
I think this subject.
And I'm asking Director.
Much better talked about in closed session.
I would look forward to that, and I would appreciate that. Could you comment on what is happening with, we talk a lot about uranium development with Iran's nuclear program, but Iran is also building a heavy water reactor capable of producing plutonium. What's the status of Iran's heavy water reactor?
Well, again, this would be a subject for closed session, I think.
I look forward to that. I yield back. Mr. Chairman.
I appreciate the time, and that's over 10 years old. Over 10, you're probably very familiar, right? You know, but a lot of people have never seen that. And I just bring it up because there's a lot of other stuff going on right now with the drones and everything that they're talking about in New Jersey and all this other stuff. And it's, people just push the fear porn to get in people's minds and make them scared. And, you know, I don't, I don't know what y'all's rules are around here with drones. Y'all leave that up to the FFA or anything? Probably can't ask you questions, but I'm just proffering, so, you know. I'm glad y'all are up there doing what you're doing, and you're keeping the fear porn down to a minimum and everything like that. So, we appreciate that from where I'm from. Thank you all.
Thank you.
And congratulations, Roma.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public wishing to speak? Hearing none, please proceed.
Announcements. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a special staff meeting on Tuesday, December 17th, 2024, immediately following the Board of Equalization meeting in Room 112 of the county city building. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will not hold a staff meeting on December 19th, 2024 due to attending the Nebraska Association of County Officials Annual Conference in Kearney. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will be adjourned Thursday, December 19th, 2024 through Thursday, January 2nd, 2025. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next regular meeting on Tuesday, January 7th, 2025, at 9:00 AM with the Board of Equalization immediately following in Room 112 of the county city building. County Commissioners can be reached at 402-441-747 or commish@lancaster NE.gov. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on LKTV. LKTV is available on Allo Channel 2 and Spectrum Channel 1300. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit Lincoln NE.gov. Meetings are also streamed live on YouTube and Facebook. LKTV apps are available on Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire TV. I made this adjournment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Ametson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We are adjourned. We will now convene the Lancaster County Board of Equalization meeting Tuesday, December 17th.
Copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located at the wall of the rear of the hearing room. All written materials to be discussed at today's meeting can be viewed at the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Printing options are available upon request. Brings us to Item One, Minutes. Approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, December 3rd, 2024.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item Two is the additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls.
Move approval of the additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item Three is our public hearing on the following motor vehicle tax exemption applications for Christian Heritage Children's Home, City Light Lincoln Church, and Cristo Rey Catholic Church of Lincoln.
We will go ahead and open the public hearings on the motor vehicle tax exemption applications. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on the motor vehicle tax exemption applications? Any members of the public wishing to speak? Okay, we will close the public, the public hearing. Move on to public comment.
Item Four is our public hearing action items for the.
You're right.
For the motor vehicle tax exemption applications.
Move approval.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries. Now, Item Five is Public Comment. Members of the public wishing to speak in items related to county Board of Equalization business not on the agenda may do so at this time.
Anyone here wishing to speak on Board of Equalization business? Any members of the public wishing to speak? Okay.
Item Six is adjournment.
Move that we adjourn.
I will defer. I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Ametson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Very good.